We have started because we want to make sure we start on time and end on time. And we also know that we have a lot of ground to cover as well. We want to thank so much all of the experts that we have in the room, our community members who joined us today as well. I'm Commissioner Leslie Delk for an LP co-facilitating today's meeting along with our Chief of Staff Deb Churchill, who's also working on more chairs. We also have overflow availability in our hearing room right next door as well. About a few months ago, Jeffco's Development and Transportation Director Jeanie Rizillian and I had a chance to meet with the Foothill area Fire Chiefs to talk about the wildland urban interface where homes and businesses and other structures are built near or in forested areas. And there was a comment made at that meeting that has stuck with me ever since. And I believe it was one of the Fire Chiefs who said, "If we have a catastrophic fire and were asked, 'What did you do to prevent this fire?'" Do we have a clear response? Now, we know that there's a lot of good work underway within our forests to mitigate wildfires, to prevent them, and we also know there's a lot more work to do moving forward, no question about it. So, one of the big questions came up around how can we enhance collaboration, how can we inventory some of the work and the efforts that we have underway? How do we raise awareness in our community about some of those issues as well? Because none of us wants to leave anything to chance, that's for sure. We want to make sure we've explored all angles. We've also seen the devastating effects of wildfire in the Pork area, for example, in Buffalo Creek. So, we have a full agenda. We have a lot of expertise in the room to help us address these issues and more. And our goals for this first study session on wildfire focus on just a big picture overview of the wildfire landscape in Jeffco. Because we know we could unpack so many of these issues and take an hour or more or a day or two. So, this is just the start to get our arms around the issue, learn more about what we're doing and where we need to improve. And then we have just a couple of specific issues that we'll touch on during our discussion section of the agenda as well. Just a quick note for those of you who may not be familiar with the Commissioners' work study sessions or work sessions, it's just an opportunity for the Board of County Commissioners to take an issue, explore it in more depth, in a more sort of casual setting. There's no public comment during a work session. However, if you'd like to share your thoughts with us, you can email us at commish@jeffco.us. And we would always welcome you to come to public comment during one of our Tuesday board meetings as well. So, we're going to go ahead and get started. And we also want to thank my mom town, who's here today recording for the benefit of those who could be here. You can see, looking around the room, there's a lot of community interest, which we're really happy about. We thought we'd start first with introductions. And if I can just ask any additional Fire Chiefs, first responders, experts working in wildfire management in our audience, if you could just stand so we can recognize you and thank you. Thank you. And then how many community members do we have with us today? If you just want to raise your hands or stand, it's great. That's great. Wonderful to see. Why don't we do a quick round of introductions? If you could just share your name, title, and the organization that you're with, or agency, we'll go around the table.
Tom Poby, I'm the Director of Open Space and Products for Jeffco.
James King, Fire Marshal for Evergreen.
Skip Sherlau, Chief with Intercity and Fire.
Bill Glaughlin, Chief, Elk Creek Fire.
Mike Wijji, Chief, Evergreen Fire.
Brad Daly, Director, Morrison and Shaw's Sheriff's Office.
Becky Baker, Director, Building Safety.
Drew Rayber, Natural Resources Supervisor for Jeffco.
Chris O'Keefe, I'm the Planning and Designing Director. But also, we want to point out Russ Clark, who's the Planning Supervisor, and Mike Madrid, who is the Senior Planner, they're here in support.
Mike Foster, Stewardship Manager, Open Space.
Don Davis, County Manager.
Aaron Betcher, Fire Management Officer for the Sheriff's Office.
Cam Zorals, County Attorney.
Lili Zabel, Commissioner of District 1.
Jack Schrader, County Sheriff.
J.D. Jekuma, Support Services Division Chief for the Sheriff's Office, also Compliments and Rights of Management.
Casey Tai, County Commissioner.
Courtney Hartman, Attorney and Attorney.
Well, why don't you jump in with our first presentation, which is from Chiefs Wijji and Glaughlin, talking about the landscape and challenges and what's working well. We have about 15 minutes for this presentation and some Q and A. We were going to ask, as you would, to just hold your questions until after the presentation for folks around the table. And we also have some discussions to have toward the end as well. We'll have three presentations coming up.
Commissioner Delk asked for snow today, she didn't have to.
All the Fire Chiefs are down here.
Okay. All right. If you guys are fine, I'll just save you while we're doing this. And I'm going to have a hard time keeping this down to 15 minutes, so I'll try and do.
Because a lot of things in UTEV.
So, you know, one of the big issues that has come up, or questions that's come up over the last year pretty extensively has been, you know, with the deadly fires that we've seen in California, you know, how vulnerable is Jefferson County to catastrophic-type fires similar to that? And obviously, that's something that caught the attention of the entire country because of, you know, that single fire ended up with 18,000 structures, lost 88 lives, and at this point, $16 billion in losses of structures. And that number is going to increase over time because, you know, the recovery costs from that fire are probably going to account to billions of dollars as well. So, when we look at, you know, the history of the Front Range, you know, a lot of the development and things that happened in the Front Range and in Jefferson County many, many decades back were working under the assumption that the fire problem here was not significant. That's largely because we went from a period from the 1940s till the 1980s where there was very little fire that occurred, largely because it snowed in May. But since 1989, when the Black Tiger Fire happened up in Boulder County, we've seen a dramatic change. And if you look on the map there, you'll see that there are a lot of large fires that have occurred in the last 30 years up and down the Front Range. And the largest of those, the Hayman Fire, was very similar in size to the fire that affected Paradise, California. One was 138,000 acres, the other was about 150,000 acres. So, historically, we know it can happen. And when we look at, I don't know if I can make this clear from here. Probably not. Well, let's skip over to that and let's just talk about, you know, what the fire modeling tells us. This is a run of a fire model that the DFPC, the State Fire Agency, ran, starting a fire in Evergreen under, you know, windy conditions similar to the Lower North Fork Fire. And you can see that over the course of three days, it would burn down through Indian Hills and would be threatening Lakewood. So, that, you know, when we start running models on that and take into account that that's a March event, that was not in the middle of the hot season. So, during the July event, that fire probably would model to run all the way into Lakewood and potentially even be dropping embers into Denver. So, you know, both the modeling and the fire history tells us that these catastrophic fires are certainly possible. And, you know, with the changing climate and the changing fuel situation that we've got, they're very likely. So, you know, over time, we have to, you know, look ahead to the potential that on the smaller end, those Buffalo Creek fires or Ivedo fires that, you know, still burn, you know, 20 or 30 houses at a time, you know, may not be the worst that we're liable to see. We could certainly potentially see a fire go 100,000 acres in a three-day period. And when we model that, it comes out to a loss of, you know, up to 10,000 homes, up to 100 businesses, potentially $5 billion in losses, and, you know, $250 million in direct and indirect costs, just the actual cost of fighting the fire. So, you know, that's a fairly significant impact. And the Hayman Fire, which burned largely forest land, ended up having a total cost of over $250 million.
Just to add some context to that model, they're able to enter in fuel, topography. Winds are only at 25 mile an hour sustained, so that's not a high-wind event. This is a three-day model, so that's how far the fire would move over three days, just to put some perspective on it. As Bill said, we can cover a lot of ground in a very short time.
And obviously, that does not represent worst-case scenario there. A worst-case scenario during the Lower North Fork Fire, we had sustained winds of 60 miles an hour. And that fire burned a mile in about 11 minutes. So, you know, the other piece that we could look at with that is risk assessment. And we've done risk assessments within the county, but so also have the insurance companies. And so, Verisk is the company that does the risk assessment nationwide for most of the insurers. And they ranked, those are the top five counties in Colorado for the number of homes that are at high or extreme wildfire risk rating. And you can see that Jefferson tops the list with 40,000 homes in that rating. When we compare that nationally, we're behind San Diego, LA, Ventura, and a couple of other counties, but we are in the top 10 nationally for the number of homes at extreme risk. And Conifer Evergreen is rated as the highest-risk single community in the country as far as percentage of homes at risk. So, when we ask why that is, you know, when we look at fire, there's three major factors that influence how bad fires will be or how extensive. Topography, so if you have steep country, the fires burn more aggressively. The more denser forests are, obviously, the bigger the issue. And then the third one is the weather. And one of the biggest issues that we've got with weather is that the worst fire danger anywhere in the world occurs under a type of condition called the Chinook or Santa Ana winds. So, this map shows those areas that see those types of winds. And you can see that, you know, in California, we know those as the Santas. Here, we call them the Chinook. And most of our major fires occur during these kind of conditions. And that's when air bloat comes up over and down the mountains, you know, bringing dry air from the deserts into the east side. And, you know, basically, you can get extremely hot, extremely dry winds under these conditions. So, when we look at, you know, kind of the national strategy for how do we deal with these fires, we separate it out into landscape resilience, or how we can restore forests to a condition that doesn't support that major fire. The fire-adapted communities, which are how well the communities are prepared for major fire, and then whether or not we have safe and effective fire response. And landscape resilience, you know, what we look for is that, you know, forests, like, you know, these photos show the kind of forest that would have been in the area prior to fire suppression starting. And under those conditions, those open grasslands with scattered trees, fires burn at low intensity. And following the fire, you still have the trees and you still have, you know, the landscape is very similar. You know, over years of allowing those forests to become very crowded, instead, we have fires that are much higher intensity. And when we have those higher-intensity fires in overgrown forests, it tends to essentially destroy all, everything. So, when you look at, and here's an example of historical photos showing 1909, 1958, and then 1989, taken from the same location. This was actually up to the north of us, but very similar to what we see around here as well. So, when we have those conditions, and for example, the Hayman Fire burns through, you can see that even, you know, we're now 16 years after the Hayman Fire, and you can see that the forest is not restoring itself. So, you know, we obviously want to avoid those situations where the forests are going to be destroyed and have little chance of recovery. Left to its own, the Hayman Fire scar will probably take another 100 to 200 years to return to a forest condition. When we look at safe and effective response, you know, we are, we do a pretty good job with the small fires, but when we look even at the Blue Bell Fire in Evergreen a few years ago, we had a 10-acre fire, and it took the majority of the fire districts in Jefferson County to control that one. So, what that tells us is that we were actually approaching kind of our capacity at that point jointly, not even as an individual fire district. So, when we start looking at the potential of a fire being 20 or 30 acres, then it will probably be, you know, subject to weather at that point. It'll burn until the wind stops blowing and we can start dealing with it. So, we do a good job at catching the fire small, but we don't have the capacity for fighting larger fires at this time. And there are a number of reasons, we can certainly, I don't want to spend a lot of time on that, but, you know, all of the fire departments are stretched due to the fact that we primarily rely on volunteers, we don't have large budgets, we just don't have the staffing to really be able to jump on fires as effectively as we would like. There are a number of other things that we look at, again, in terms of trying to have fire-adapted communities, educating the public, having defensible space around structures, having hardened homes, homes that are designed so that they don't ignite easily, you know, refuge areas and good evacuations. All of those pieces are pieces that we want to see in our communities to increase the safety of the residents that live there. In looking at this, we, you know, there's a number of ways that we can approach how to reduce these risks. And we start at what we call the Engineering Act, which is how do we, you know, move back to the situation and engineer the environment we live in to be safer? And that would include things like landscape restoration, you know, large-scale mitigation projects, codes that make the homes less pliable, all of those steps that don't require intervention at the time of an incident. You know, in landscape resilience, we have started with quite a bit of work in the area. We've had grant funding that has helped with that quite a bit. But the science behind that says that we need to be putting about $21 million a year into the Upper South Platte Watershed, which includes much of Jefferson County as well as parts of Park County. $21 million a year would be the target number to reduce the forest thickness back to a level that would, you know, reduce the risk of those catastrophic level fires. Looking at education, you know, obviously, we really try to stress this, try to get out and talk to folks. I think we have a good, done a good job of teaching people to be aware of the problem, but we haven't turned that around as much into how do we get residents to fix the problem? For example, when we look at neighborhoods in our communities, we see that compliance with defensible space is below 20% in many of them. So, 80% or more of the homes don't have adequate defensible space around them. Economic incentives, you know, there is the state property tax, and, you know, we look at things like just providing low cost or free removal of slash as one of those economic incentives to get people to work. Enforcement is a little bit more difficult, you know, getting, you know, I don't think anybody's had a really good success rate anywhere across the country in trying to enforce people to have good defensible space standards. But it is possible, like on the building construction end or some pieces where we can fix that. And then finally, the last piece, if none of those other steps intervene to reduce the risk of life in homes, you know, the fire response should be the last piece of it. But it has to be, obviously, an essential piece, both in terms of keeping fires small and also in terms of, you know, doing what we can to not only protect homes and also, you know, evacuate and effectively, you know, reduce the risk of life. And that's kind of the introduction to the topic.
Four minutes to spare. Nicely done. Open for any questions, reactions? Taking it all in, processing.
Real quick question, when you talk about those people doing their defensible space and that kind of, do you think that's more of an education issue, an ability issue, or an economic issue?
Yes. Yeah, it is. Because there's a number of issues that tie to it. Many people move here, don't recognize, you know, the danger to the community they live in. When we ask, you know, residents at Homeowners Association, how many of them are new within the last year, you know, usually we get a quarter of the hands go up. And then, you know, they all wait till the last snowfall in May and then decide to sell the house and move back down the hill. But the, you know, the economic side of it is also very much an issue. We always hear from folks that, you know, getting rid of slash is time-consuming and expensive. You have to hire someone in to come in, especially to take down trees near a home, it can be very, very expensive. So, those costs can add up very quickly, and all of those things are enough of a deterrent. And really, we see people doing it largely because they're told to by their insurance companies. And I think with $16 billion in losses on the Paradise Fire, we're going to see a lot more of that. I think we're going to be hitting a very difficult time in the future with the cost and availability of insurance in the mountain communities.
I think to add to that as well, we also have an aging population, and it's very difficult for some of those families to be able to actually do the physical work that it takes. And sometimes it's out of their economic ability to pay someone to do it. So, there's several factors that are going to contribute to that.
Are there any communities along the Front Range that are seeing more success in this area that they might look tomorrow?
I think the community in the foothills that would serve as the best example would be Genesee. I don't know if we've got time for them to say a few words, but they were the first firewise community in the state. And when you drive along 70 by Genesee there, you see that largely there still is a lot of grassland and large trees, unlike the, some of the other areas where it's all dense forests. So, you know, I would love to see more of our communities be like Genesee in that respect.
And that is a good example, it's a great example. And when these communities do become firewise, an issue that comes in after that is the upkeep of it. So, they'll do a tremendous amount of work in the beginning and get their neighborhoods to look really wonderful, but then it will come back, it will grow back. So, it's a continual upkeep of it as well, which can be time-consuming economically.
Seems like the more you cut it, the faster it grows.
It's just in my backyard.
Sure.
I'm like, where did this bush come from?
Yeah. There's strategic areas where you want to cut, areas that you want it there.
A question, Chief, so you said Conifer and Evergreen have the highest risk in the country, and is it because there's so many homes in those areas? Or what's causing that to be the highest risk?
It's a combination. I mean, of that, those 40,000 homes that had higher extreme risk in the county, the majority of them are in that area.
Okay.
Because it's the densest population. And then on top of that, the, kind of the status of the forests in those areas are some of the worst in the Front Range as far as the overgrown forests. And part of that is, you know, especially in the Evergreen area, because that community was established long ago enough that fire suppression has been happening a lot longer than areas that are further out, which are maybe decades, decades later that suppression really, you know, reduced the cleanup of the forests that happened.
The last big fire weekend determined, happened in Evergreen, was in 1924. So, we're creeping up on 100 years since there's been a major event in that area. So, the forest is at plenty of time to, well, to thicken up, that's the problem, it's an unhealthy forest, it's so thick.
During that time, there's been a lot of suppression of the smaller fires that would naturally have occurred and treated the forest. Low-intensity fires would have completely suppressed them.
And what are most of those fires, how are they started? Are they not manned, are they like?
Actually, a lot of environmental. Colorado has a pretty high percentage, close to probably mid-'70s as far as natural causes, lightning strikes. Where the rest of the country might be opposite of that, where a higher percentage, it's human-caused. Jefferson, or Colorado has a higher percentage of lightning strikes.
There's numbers out there, 80% to 90% of fires are human-caused, whether, power lines, anything where there's human intervention. But as Chief Sherlau mentioned, lightning is a big cause of fires in Jefferson County.
Lightning is number one for us, and the number two one is power lines. And the unfortunate thing with power lines is that those usually start during the high wind events. So, when trees are blown into the power lines, and that's how, obviously, most of the catastrophic fires in California happened over the last couple of years during those same events, trees blown into the power lines, which then start a fire during the worst possible conditions.
Now, is there like a method of mitigation for the owners of those power lines, except energy or the phone company? Do they have to mitigate certain space around those, or how does all that work? Or does it work?
They do, and they're out pretty extensively doing that, but they only have a certain right-of-way that they can, they can clear.
The tree's bigger and it falls.
Yeah, but then people would probably complain if they had a 60 or 70-foot right-of-way. So, they do, they clear the right-of-way that they have authorized, and they do a good job with that, but obviously, there's always a chance of trees from outside that area.
I wanted to just circle back to the firewise communities. You mentioned Genesee and the work that this community is doing. And maybe we can take just 30 seconds to admit it, to hear what makes a firewise community, why Genesee is successful. I was just touching on that. Because I do think that that's interesting. What is Genesee doing that we can learn from?
So, Genesee, which is just up on I-75 by the 256. 2002 was the first year as a firewise community, when it first came out to the State Forest Service, Scott Woods. So, that homeowners association, they have an open space program and a very active community. It spends about $60,000 a year out of their operating budget solely for fire mitigation, shaded tube breaks on open space. And then they partner with the Department of Natural Resources for 50/50 cost agreements for private property too. It's all elective, and it's a lot of social. When I worked there, it was a social forest, is the way I labeled it, because every tree was negotiated, every tree was discussed. But they have a very active and proactive approach to fire mitigation, and they have a really strong community, a lot of Spark Clubs in there that do it. So, did that answer your question?
So, you can motivate the community that's engaged in all grants as well?
Very motivated.
Yeah.
So, that Department of Natural Resource grant that's been coming through the last few years has been super helpful. I think over the years, it's turned close to $500,000 in matching funds to help that community prevent trees. The biggest thing is, Chief, the saying is getting rid of slash, getting rid of trees, chipping trees. A lot of times, folks want to chip it and turn it right back on the soil right next to the house, which is a rearrangement of the fuel. So, taking that, those chips and taking them to a resource place or a recycling center is a huge hurdle. Having it useful, a product useful to use those trees, maybe whole trees or chips, is something that our community always was looking for, you know, where to take it at a cost-effective manner. Hauling chips costs a lot of money. You take one truck load, it costs you 500 bucks, and that's just, you know, maybe 10, 15 trees. So, it's really expensive, really fast.
I could add, most of our department's app programs in place that Evergreen took the Community Wildfire Protection Plan, and following a model, Clear Creek County had implemented, created Community Wildfire Protection Implementation Plan, which is taking each neighborhood that's identified in that plan and drilling down into that to say, "Okay, neighbors, how are we going to fix the problem in your neighborhood?" Helping them write a plan and of attack to try and get that done, helping them find grant money to do it. That has really started taking off for us, it worked really well in Clear Creek County. El Creek has grant funded mitigation programs going on. They're hiring mitigation crews in the summer, just out chipping and cutting, trying to help their community out. So we each have some programs in place that we're trying to push along.
Any other questions before we move to the sheriff?
I know there was discussions at one time about trying to get a curtain burner or something like that to help get rid of some of the materials. Is that too risky, or is that something that would make sense?
We're actually using one in Evergreen. A contractor has one going. He's going to burn all week now that we have nine inches of snow up there. And it's a very clean way to get rid of it. It burns it off the ground, burns it in a contained fashion, and creates very low smoke. So when it starts up, people will see it, but after that, it's been pretty successful up on a big mitigation project.
We talked about it a few years ago. We got a lot of comments from the community that they didn't want to see a fire of any kind introduced into the neighborhood. So we kind of backed off on it.
That might have been just an educational thing. I know Travis was working hard on that, trying to find a home for it. Would have been a great program, we were disappointed that it didn't.
And the other piece of that is finding the right home for it. People don't want it near their homes. So finding a location where it could be in a gravel lot or something where the risk is not as significant would be better than the original proposal.
That's one of the things that firewise and wildfire partners are involved in. Really key in it is that it's a community effort. And you use the tools you have available to you. So someone may not like the curtain burner, they may not like the prescription fire, and they're fying and things like that. But when you collectively do it, you get the game plan. So when you go through and look at Genesee today, and literally go across the I-70 and some of the other areas that hadn't been treated, you know, it is all education, because it's not unsightly. It actually enhances some of the communities and things like that. So when you start looking at those types of things, the cool thing about those programs are is that they start to look at that as a whole. And then they bring out, so how do we make your community better? And then we do that by making it each individual house. Another thing that does is it tends to prefer the cost also. For some things at home which can do, through assistance, the slash building is another opportunity we have, through the monies and grants and that. It takes everybody doing that little bit at a time. So when you're looking at treating 8,000, 7,000 neighbors a year, this guy can do one, and we get a bunch of people helping out. Everybody.
It's a great example of the power of community being together. Well, I'm just watching our time, so if you keep us going, and we'll have more time for discussion too, and turn it over to the sheriff and his team to talk a little bit more about the work that you're doing.
I'm going to introduce a couple of people. Del Kleinschmidt is in the back corner here, and he's the commander that I have at the Mountain Precinct. And he works, Brian's going to be doing the talking here in a minute. So don't try to hand that thing to me. But Del works regularly with the fire chiefs, the mountain fire chiefs, and Brian Daly. And to mention, for those who may not know, Brian Daly, he's the Jefferson County Emergency Manager on contract, on loan, from the West Metro Fire Department. He's a chief of some sort. I never see him in uniforms, I don't know how many bugles he has on his collar. But he's a professional firefighter, and we thought that several years ago, that would be a better fit for us. We could learn more, we could be more proactive in terms of understanding and also jumping on fires when they do occur quicker. I wanted to comment on the slash programs. And this was touched on a little bit. Several years ago, when we had grant funded positions in the sheriff's office in managing slash, we did a pilot program on doubleheader Ranch Road. And when we did that, we took the slash right to the homeowners, the slash collection. And at that time, we had less than a 25% participation rate. So I'm not exactly sure, I think it was mentioned perhaps sometimes aging communities certainly cost. But that was like a seeded, we were seed funding that program to try to take care and create a model. And it didn't have the success that we had hoped for. But I mean, we stopped trying. The other thing I wanted to provide a comment on, and I think Brian will address some of this in one of the slides, is that the sheriff is the fire marshal for the areas that do not have fire districts. And then coordination responsibility when there are fires that exceed the capacity of an individual fire department. And as such, the county commissioners have vested the authority and the sheriff to declare when there should be a fire restriction or ban put in place. I actually think that's a good model. We're pretty nimble and we're pretty aggressive on doing those things early. Typically, when we initiate a fire ban, we are communicating with each of the fire departments that are affected. And we've taken a position of doing those more so countywide. I know open spaces are doing their own thing and exempted from that a bit. But that education that goes on, although more fires start from natural events and electrical events, the human caused are something that we can certainly caution people about and mitigate a little bit of the risk. But with that, I'm going to turn it over to Brian to work through the presentation.
Cool, thank you. Thanks for having me, I appreciate it. We'll talk a little bit here about just some of the roles and responsibilities associated with the sheriff's office. And one of the things is, as an elected governor, we're regulated in some of the things we can do. There's some things that are required from Colorado by statutes that, as the sheriff mentioned, he is a fire warden for the county. And he is a fire warden for areas that are not protected by municipal or special districts predominantly. And then where it does kind of expand a little bit into the coordination of suppression efforts. And that's written into the statutes associated with what his role is as the fire warden. So a couple of them are responsible for coordinating fire suppression efforts. And that's part of the idea of what Aaron does as our fire management officer, some of the other things we do. But it really is in unincorporated areas. And that's one of the issues that we run across time to time again, is that we don't have the ability to succeed with some of the things that people think that the sheriffs ought to be, to kick the loop. Thus, we don't have fire guys. And one of the points of the fire protection districts and municipalities, that's one of the things that they're charged. So we look at the idea of unincorporated areas. And then the kind of the negative one is exceeding capabilities of fire protection for their ability to control. And that's where the coordinated effort really comes into play, in terms of what we do with the leadership of the local protection districts. And a lot of things that are set up amongst themselves, such as mutual aid on medicaid agreements and support and the communications to be able to access resources. And that starts at the spectrum. So where the sheriff's office really kind of fits into the exceeding the capabilities, is that's when it starts going into emergency management, where we have the type programs that we have. So as an incident escalates beyond their capacity or beyond the capacity of the reasonable resources that are available, then we can start looking into other aspects of getting resources, funding for some of those things. And that's all done in a spectrum. It's kind of done simultaneously in terms of our fire management officer looking at a complexity analysis, the state DFPC fire manager, really looking at complexity analysis. So we're all kind of in there looking around, trying to figure out what it's going to take to make that effort in terms of suppression. And that goes with air loading aircraft, or the hand crews that can be onsite even before or without ever having a declaration of the large fire. So we've got some things in place as a result of the standards that are available to us, or that kind of guide what we're supposed to be doing. In addition, there's another thing that talks about the three functions we can do, consists of our chief of control. And that's predominantly where we end up operating, 90% of the time. We can get those personal assistants. If we have an issue and it's being a, it's surpassing the capabilities, we can ask other agencies to assist in those things and still maintain that through unified command, joint command. And then if our wheels fails in that process of an expanding fire, we can assume that, which is assuming that and the financial responsibilities and kind of monitoring. That gives us a bigger pool of resources, a bigger pool of money to get to. Some more of the coordination, we can point incident management. One of the things that we do here, Jeff Coles, have the incident management. Type three, which is kind of the middling, not the type one, type two ones that the big complex fires in California use, we do have a local type three incident management team that's available to help us out in these fires. They can get beyond the reasonable control, but don't let make the type two or type ones. And they can act as transition. In some instances, we do assume the financial responsibility, and we do assume the ordering and monitoring of resources that come through. Most of those come through the EOC. Seeking assistance from the state in order to declare disaster. If it overwhelms the capability of a local fire department, then it comes to us. And then we look at for a while, and if it becomes beyond our capacity, then we go to the state. The state will look and do that complex analysis and determine what efforts need to be needed to suppress it. If it gets beyond their capabilities, then it goes through a f-. So there's some funding associated with those types of things. And it really is part of the collective effort in terms of understanding and recognizing the transition from a type one, type two, type three, type four fire that actually get around. And recognize them, and then actually taking those actions so that the suppression efforts aren't harmed and that we're able to maintain the capacity. Because really, where we get in trouble is on a couple of different fires. And what's happening now with the forest where they are, is that we'll get a fairly small fire that can be completely intense pretty quickly. So we need a lot of resources right now. But the one that really gets us is the small fire that doesn't go out. So we need to sustain a capability of fighting a reasonably sized fire over an extended period. So one of these in terms of a state fire, resource, regional resource mobilization, is how do we maintain that supply of firefighters and fire operators, important than everything else, over a longer time, like three or four days, when generally we can be done in two or three. And where the model that we came under, traditionally then, a fire starts if it's due a type four, type three, type two, type one, and then it gradually falls away. Unfortunately, that model doesn't really exist. So we're talking about this new territory. One victim about the money? Some of the things that liability for expenses, we can, as a county sheriff, we can request assistance for controlling fires for property not within the district, is what we're supposed to do. But that also, the criteria we use is, does it constitute a danger to health and safety? And is it a risk to damage in crime? So that's where, that's kind of the threshold that we look at in terms of, is it beyond capability? Is it, are we losing control? So we can, and under those circumstances, we can start to get folks, we can assume the liability expense. We can start to trigger some of the funding mechanisms from the state, but at one, under those circumstances. No man's land is just the area that are not covered by any federal protective district or municipal fire protection district. The funding really comes from a couple of different sources, and we'll show some of those later. But it's really based on the public characteristics. And we start looking for additional funding to fight fire or mitigation efforts beforehand, or a recovery fighter is really the size of complexing property ownership. Each of those can trigger some level of funding. If we get a large fire, it's fairly complex, that will go through a federal fire pretty quick. If it's a fairly complex fire, it's a small fire, we'll be only end up at a state. If it becomes just, if it's property only, if it's fire on private property, and it's not that big, there is a responsibility of property ownership to fund. So it really depends on what can go on with the fire characteristics. The whole ball of wax is going through three entities. You know, the local fire chiefs and their efforts, and what they can do locally and what they can do collectively. Then there's Aaron in the state, who's the representative of the sheriff's office, state fires, who is county fire management officer. The DFPC has their fire management officer. And each of those evaluations is based on basically the size of the existing property ownership. But it's the complexity analysis they look at to determine whether we meet the threshold for a larger type fire, which again, opens up the funding. Our source of funding here that we have locally, the emergency fire fund is a program that we contribute $130,000 a year. Ultimately, the state maintains this fund, and it's used on a first and for sure basis for fires that don't reach the complexity of the other funding. So it's kind of the first step of what we have available to do. The work funds, the wildfire emergency response fund is a state fund that funds initial attack responses. A lot of times, we're able to get aircraft and hand crews for a great period of the initial attack for free through this program. And then it can be used for extended or long term fire attacks. The state has a resource mobilization fund that goes to, there's a whole bunch of criteria associated with how you get that. But really, what it does is, as long as you're operating at a level that the state is engaged in and you're following the processes, a lot of those resources can be covered through this resource mobilization fund. That one is a little tricky because it is based on the DFPC officer, emergency management, and the governor's decisions. Their discretion. And if we get really big, then you have the fire management assistance grants. And those are generally large fire federally run, federally financed. And those cover, generally, it's like a 75 millimeter, so you can get an awful lot of things. But once again, it reaches the complexity analysis to do that. What we do for our fire management component is, our priority is within what statute code is required. So part of the role of Aaron's job, he is the representative of the sheriff on wildfires. His role is assist the initial attack resources and meet with the fire chiefs on scene and the sheriff's deputies and things that are there to manage. And just kind of assess what's going on. Are we making progress, are we not making progress? What types of resources do we have available that we can dump on to help? What need necessarily, what is the necessity? And then really, it's that first step into expanding incidents and start getting the state and federal resources. We do frequently order aircraft and hand crews for initial attack. We do have aircrafts in the monument, there's always, almost always a helicopter down there. We've got some up in front range. Rock Mountain National Airport has the air tanker. So we do have resources available. As fire conditions warrant and the planning levels for the state and the federal changes, those come in and come out, so that is variable. And then I guess probably the biggest issue we run across is that they're fairly limited in the season. So we do contract, we have a commonly needed contract for some of the local operator operators to get those during offseason, complexity analysis and kind of going on the go. And then what we look at is the transition. How do we transition from one type fire to another and start to coordinate the delegation? Because until these guys release it, until we release it, they don't understand, they can't do it. So we really look at the delegation authority as kind of the transition. That's the indicator that, yeah, this is an expanding fire. Or the release authority back to the original team. And that's the things that Aaron coordinates. We do have an incident management team, a type three incident management team. The sheriff's been a sponsoring agency for nearly 20 years. Part of the administrative component we do for that is that we've developed a meeting roster. And it's rostered by local folks. A lot of them are firefighters or retired federal land management folks. So we really have a fairly robust team that comes in and really can address that transition from a local fire to national fire. Once again, as we mentioned, really wish that we're relying most to maintain cars over a longer period of time than we did before. We also train and exercise the team on an annual basis. We coordinate the deployments. So right now, we're looking at a deployment of the INT to Heatstale for the floods. The Air Mom has a team, so in Lake City, they had a couple of avalanches that allowed a lot of debris. The state organization is looking at deploying the INT down there sometime after the first one. So that, our guys will be there with that. The EOC operates in a support role for them. If they get deployed and it's not a declared emergency, the EOC is operating as an EOC, we operate as a support function. So we supply them with personnel and equipment supplies and all that kind of stuff. And then the big thing that we do is we process the reimbursement. We send people, we tell them it's all done, and then reimburse the folks that get deployed and all that kind of stuff for the cost incurred for being a deployment. The administrative component of it, one of the things we are do, as the sheriff mentioned, we are the coordinator for fire restrictions. As the office and Aaron's role, as we monitor the fire conditions, the moisture conditions, fire behavior in the area, to kind of determine whether to implement many recent fire restrictions. Though most of the fires are natural caused by what we, one of the things that we find with fires with fire restrictions are, is it just brings them to the forefront. People are more cognizant, more understanding of the conditions that are right for fire fires, a little bit more careful. And they are a bit of a conundrum because of some of the time concerns with the federal, the force, national portions out, they're processing in and out, there's a difference. So, there is some varieties within the community. But the idea that we're looking at them, and they're at the forefront, and people start to see that their conditions are right. And when we do have fire restrictions, we do see, most people are a little bit mature, and it seems to work. We looked at aircraft contracting, except we have the call and needed contracts, but we also are the conduit to the national dispatch services, the two federal workforce lines. So, that instead of, for heavy equipment, air tankers, or larger helicopters, and that's the process we can also go through to acquire resources from EOC. Annual operating agreement, that kind of sets the rules and engagement for firefighting in the county, is an agreement between the county and the state, and a whole bunch of signature agencies. But we manage that, and part of that is the, how do we fund them? What types of support can we get? What types of things can we work?
I'm just going to do a quick little time check, just so we make sure we have time for the questions.
I think I have like two more slides.
Awesome.
Virtually, thanks. Fire mitigation, right now, we had crews this year, but we found that that wasn't very effective, and we run across some economic issues, timing issues. A lot of the folks that did are managing work, were students. So, they, our model from March to October, they'd come in June and in August, so our capability will kind of reduce for the rest of the year. But we do public education, public outreach things, and we do site assessments for individual homeowners and communities to see, and coordinate those with the local folks. We do a lot of training in wildland and ICS classes. We do a lot of requirements for work, certification, and IQS control. So, we do maintain that as a function of the sheriff's office. Close enough?
Any questions or reactions?
We just, a question about Denver Mountain Parks and the role of Denver Mountain Parks in terms of mitigation?
Yes.
Perfect. Let me ask that for you. One of the things that we mentioned is, at the very beginning, if there are any questions that you have, we can, we don't, since we don't simply have a public comment or community from the audience, very little study session. However, it's an excellent question in terms of, what role does Denver Mountain Parks have regarding mitigation and getting up forests to help prevent wildfires? And so, I'll just, I'll open that up as a quick question to anyone who may want to answer that. Too much? Well, that is coming up. Perfect. I was just going to, I was just going to ask a quick question about the work that the sheriff's office does. You talked about site assessments, public outreach, and education. And how does that go, how do those efforts also coordinate with some of the work that we may see the chiefs doing in their communities, related in part to FireWise and other efforts? Or open spaces?
They dovetail very well. We're all given the same message. And whether you're a FireWise community, or a wildfire department, or just following this college state forest service guidelines, ultimately, it comes down to what types of things can you do to make your home fire safe? And Aaron's role is going out to community meetings, pancake breakfasts, and all kinds of things like that, is really giving the same message across the board. And that's one of the kind of benefits of people getting this from the local fire departments, the county, the state forest service, and that. So, really, the message is dovetail quite well because they're starting to see some impact, and they're starting to look at their resources for this information.
All right. Well, why do we keep, thank you very much. It's great, great overview. Why don't we move next to Jeff Coles, space and then?
Great, thank you, Commissioner Vanell. I'm Tom Hobie, I'm the director of open space and parks for Jefferson County. I'd like to start by thanking the commissioners for calling for this session. This is a hugely important topic to all of us in the room, and I would venture to say everybody who lives in the county. Forest health and a forest fire impacts everyone in the county. We live in the plains or the mountains, so thank you, commissioners. I'd like to spend a minute introducing some members of our team, and making some initial comments, and then I wanted to go over our team for a brief presentation. So, we have with us, Mike Foster is our stewardship manager, Drew Rayburn, who will be doing most of the talking, is our natural resources supervisor, and Mary Ann Vanell is our visitor services manager. At the end of our presentation, I'd like to yield a couple of minutes to Mark Danner and Brett Rolder to talk about briefly about the county slash program that has a relationship here. Just real quickly, we're going to talk about forest health, and it's impacted on fire mitigation and so forth. And Chief O'Laughlin, you brought up some slides that are really the devastating kinds of things that we want to prevent from happening. When we have a fire that burns so hot that it destroys the forest for centuries, a century or more, that's not a healthy forest situation. That's not what we're looking for. That's not what people live in Jefferson County to see and enjoy when they come to the mountains. So, Drew will talk a little bit about some examples of what we're doing on the ground, what we've done on the ground since the late 70s. I want to talk a little bit about Jefferson County open space and Denver Mountain Parks. Together, we own less than 10% of the land in the county. And people think about us, and they think, well, open space is a big part of forest health and fire mitigation. And that's, that's true to some extent, to at least 10% of the extent. And we can provide really good examples of how you can do things along with the Genesee example that we mentioned earlier. But we can't do it all. We have to work together, there's lots of private lands, other state and federal lands. See the forest service here today. We're all big players in this effort. So, I want, I want to just turn it over to Drew, let him go through some slides of what our efforts have looked like in the past, and what it looks like currently. Go, Drew.
All right, thank you, Tom. So, to take the opportunity to chat with everyone in the room today, the structure of this is fairly short. We're going to take you back in time a bit, about 43 years of history in a couple of slides, bring you up to the present, give you an example of one of the key projects we're working on, and then talk about some of the future projects, most of which are planned in partnership with people who are around the table today, and we're very pleased with that. There'll be some details on these slides, and I'll try to show you the high points as I, as I talk. Really, the program started for us, for open space, around 1976. We were really focused on responding to a large ideal outbreak at the time. That was large enough to actually affect entire parks like White Ranch and Elk Valley. We were doing some smaller, 15 projects, you know, up to about 13, 15 acres, but the program really started accelerating in 1990. Over the next nine years, we implemented, by our best estimates, about 41 projects. And when we say fuels reduction, we're talking about the type of projects that we're all discussing here today, removing trees from the landscape, reducing that fire risk, restoring forest health. So, 41 projects totaling about 780 acres. The size raised from, you know, single acre projects all the way up to projects as large as 90 acres. And those are just some of the parks, White Ranch, Alderford Three Sisters, Meyer Ranch, look at what these projects were focused. The following 10 years, the program got even larger. 71 additional fuels reduction projects totaling something around 1,100 acres. Project size also increased, so from small, again, one acre type projects up to larger projects such as 200 acre projects. We're very pleased to have a prescribed fire program really ramping up at this time as well. I think my, one of my more experienced members of my team reports, we were involved in dozens of fires, maybe as many as 70 or even 80, totaling about 1,600 acres that were safely implemented on open space parks and properties. And of course, these fires, and also these larger forest projects, have always been planned and implemented with a large range of collaborators, many local fire districts, state forest service, and many other collaborators, again, some of who work here today. I'm a big photo guy. This is a photo from the 1996 showing a shaded fuel break. I think virtually everyone here is familiar with these, but it's creating a literal line in the sand where the fire were to flare up, hopefully would hit these fuel breaks and either die down or actually stop advancing. These fire breaks also allow ingress and egress for first responders, folks working the fire lines. And we have a network of these throughout the county that we created and that we're working on maintaining. So, this photo's from 1996. I really enjoyed this photo of White Ranch Park showing a prescribed fire in action. There's some details here that I'll gloss over, but safe to say, the forest had already been treated in advance, the fire being implemented to make sure that the fire would burn safely. That's why those trees are widely spaced. And there's also lines of fire being laid very carefully, very precisely in the landscape so that as the fire is burning, there's very little chance of, in this park, with this situation, of it being out of control. And this is from 2008. Since that time, we've been extremely busy. We've got the most current projects here at first, from 2015 to 2018, about 235 acres of fuels reduction projects at park like Alderford, Flying J, White Ranch again, and more recently Beaver Ranch. I really want to highlight the collaborators here on the right side of the slide, Coalition for the Upper South Platte Partnership, State Forest Service, Denver Mountain Parks, Elk Creek Fire District, and many others, just trying to keep it on one slide. But I'll keep banging the strum that these types of projects are carefully planned, implemented, and evaluated with all the folks that are in the room today, for open space to implement these projects, even on our properties. And the rest of the slide is really similar projects dating back another 19 years, different parks, same approach, fuels reduction, prescribed fire, and a real emphasis on collaboration. So, a before and after photo at Alderford Three Sisters Park, the pre-treatment photos on 2014, the project is outlined in yellow. It's a little hard to see on these screens, but the forest is extremely dense. The project, which we call the Blair Ranch project, was implemented two years later on the right side of the screen. I hope that you can see the increased spacing between the trees, a real risk in fire reduction and a large increase in forest health for a variety of wildlife species. So, bringing you up to the present, right now, we're extremely proud of the work that's happening in the Flying J Ranch Park, in this high priority fire area that we've been talking about today. We hope to be done by the end of 2020 with about 150 acres of forest restoration and fire risk reduction, in close collaboration with Denver Mountain Parks, and also funded with money from the state wildfire reduction program. We have at least three additional projects already being scoped, and many other maintenance projects that, of course, we address every year. Working with Evergreen Fire Protection District on a shared fuel break along a road, Buffalo Park Road near Alderford Three Sisters. Working with Elk Creek and the state forest service at a shaded fuel break along Foxton Road, which the project was brought to the commissioners recently for your approval, so thank you for that. And then we are doing some long-term planning for Meyer Ranch Park right now, again, with a long list of collaborators, including Jefferson Conservation District and private landowners, to implement as large as we can, one of these projects to reduce fire risk at Meyer Ranch. Parks largely have been untreated, so we're really excited about moving forward with that. So, we're almost done. Last content is really showing you what the Flying J Ranch Park project looks like now. This photo was from last fall, showing a masticator on left in an area that we've already treated. And then on the right is Denver Mountain Parks property, and no worries, that's going to be treated in 2019. So, this was just a chance for us to get a before and after photo. A dramatic change to the landscape, creating these openings, really removing a large amount of fuel from the landscape, reducing fire risk, and again, restoring that forest back to a healthy condition for wildlife, as well as our park visitors, which is an extremely important part of open space forest management projects. This map of Krishnathaya, you would ask for a map sort of the different years in which this project was implemented in Flying J. The numbers are rather hard to see here, but these different patches of these different stands were treated at different times over the last 18 years. We've been chipping away at this park for almost 20 years, and we're really pleased to bring that level of forethought to this. Each of these projects was planned and implemented with different collaborators. But the real benefit here, and then I should say the blue parcels are Denver Mountain Parks, showing how important collaboration is. The real benefit pays off here, which I believe is the final slide, showing a landscape scale fuel break that we're attempting to create at Flying J Ranch. All of the areas shaded in yellow, including most of Denver Mountain Parks property, will have been treated very carefully to, again, reduce fire risk and restore forest health. If a fire were to occur on a park or in one of the joint neighborhoods, we hope that this fire break will allow for better response and less intensity in the burn. And it's this type of collaboration that is required to treat at these large scales that we're talking about today. And I believe that's the last one. So, hopefully this is time to come.
So, we call the thoughts, Drew didn't mention, this is about $2,500 an acre in mechanically treat forests, as Drew has described. And really, the slide you saw on the strike burns, that option has been taken off the table of white because of all the events we talked about earlier. But it is a very effective and very cost-effective way to treat forests and create forest health. And it's something we need to have broader discussion about as we, as we move ahead with this. I want to give Mary Ann Vanell just a minute or so to talk about some of the regulation changes we made last year that relate to fire mitigation and prevention.
Thanks, Drew, for covering forest health. I just want to talk about visitor management perspective, Jefferson County open space. So, in 2018, the punchline is that we changed our park rate to mimic a stage two fire ban pretty much all the time. We did that for two reasons. One is going in and out of stage one to stage two, for us is about a four-day operation because of signage, covering grills, removing opportunities, removing firewood, putting firewood back. So, operationally, that is challenging. Second is visitor behavior. Our visitors proved over and over again they couldn't handle fire. So, we would find unattended campfires, we would find grills with fires still going in them. We tried to do enforcement, but a lot of times the person's gone. And then lastly, when we look statistically at what our visitors do in our parks, so what are the healthy nature-based experiences they're enjoying in our parks? It's a very small percentage of our visitors that are there for fire. That is our campers and our picnicers. And many of our picnicers have already moved to a propane grill system. So, again, under this, this new regulation, a propane or anything with an on-off switch is allowed. So, even campers can bring a camp stove down and use that. So, we feel like that's a very compromise to address the issue of fire safety behavior and not being able to be all places at all times. But also, really make sure we're listening to our neighbors, because our neighbors are saying, we're very concerned about the campground, we're very concerned about people in the picnic areas and others. So, we tried to listen to that, and tried to do the best thing for our visitors, and also just operationally what made sense for us. So, that's, that's the basic premise.
Thanks, Mary Ann. Last couple of minutes to Mark.
Okay. Hi, everyone. I'm Mark Danner with Jefferson County, and my division currently coordinates and manages the county slash program. And I mainly do that through the heavy lifting of our consultant that we hired several years ago, Brett Roller. He's got the enthusiasm and the expertise with the slash, so I'm going to turn it over to Brett.
Thank you all very much, and I've heard it said several times, this is an incredibly important conversation, and thank you for putting this together. And this is a great response, and it just couldn't be more important. About five years ago, we revamped the slash program, and the idea was to get more opportunity for people to bring material closer to their homes. In the past, it's been several large collection points that left a very large percentage of Jefferson County unserved by that. We revamped that, turned it around, made much smaller collection sites, but much more frequently. Every weekend through the first of June to the last of October, we now have a collection site somewhere in Jefferson County. I would agree with comments we've heard over and over again, the participation rates are fairly low. We are seeing a lot of the same people over and over again, and it became, I think we got to a saturation point fairly quickly with that. We started talking a year ago, two years ago, that we need to reach out, we need to start holding more hands, and getting more people, helping them find their way to the slash sites, and all these other opportunities. That educational component for this is enormous. So, the slash program is getting ready to start in a couple of weeks, and we expect to have another great year, but there's a lot more that we can do, and a lot more that we need to do to get those people educated, to get them to us. Is that quick time? That was pretty long.
Yeah, right, right in the window.
That's all we have.
No, it's perfect. Any questions or reactions, slash program, prescribed roofs, Denver Mountain Parks, and your whole collaborative effort, just to do that.
Drew, I asked this last time. So, you said $2,500 an acre. So, if you were to treat all of the forested and open space, what does that roll up to as a total cost?
Sure. So, we did some checking after the last conversation. We refined our estimate a bit. We've got probably between 16,000 and 20,000 forested acres on open space parks and properties. So, we'd be that times 2,500, so that ranges between 30 and 50 million, something about in the dark. We were trying to treat every forested acre on open space. Now, there's a lot of caveats to that. Some of these areas have already been treated, some are in operable areas, but that's an order of magnitude.
And some may not be as high risk as others, but at the end of the day, it's still a lot.
It's a lot. And every time we bring another piece of property into the park system, which is one of our, you know, our highest goals, that brings additional forested land almost always into the park system.
And so, the same cost would be true of Colorado And so the same cost would be true of Colorado forest land, or Carl forest land, national parks, and any private?
It would depend in terms of who's doing the work. I think that's a general ballpark figure, you know, $2,000, $3,000 per acre. So I think that's fair.
So that's a pretty big number.
Not as big as 12 billion.
That's the beginning of the first. How much is a burn, a fox burn? I don't actually have a current burn price per acre. We just haven't been doing them in open space for long enough where I don't have a market price for that. It really depends on who you're partnering with to execute that burn. So I would defer to others in the room for what a per-acre burn cost is in the area.
Yeah, you know, the whole cost per acre thing is something, you know, the Upper South Black Partnership, which was mentioned, is a collaborative group with the Forest Service, Colorado State Forestry, several of the local fire districts. And we manage a lot of the, a lot of the projects that are going along go through that, including the Denver Mountain Parks project that has just been completed at New Park. The cost per acre on treatment can vary anywhere from $1,600 an acre for areas that don't need a lot of treatment and can be done with equipment, up to $4,000 an acre for work that's done on steep slopes all by hand. And then, you know, when we look at prescribed fire, that's usually a second-term event. So if the forest is treated by cutting trees, piling, and burning, then, you know, five or six years later, when the young trees are starting to sprout up everywhere, that's when you come in to do prescribed fire. That prescribed fire cost is almost always going to be much lower. So once you get over that initial hurdle, as long as you're willing to maintain those forests, you know, moving ahead, you can get that cost down to under 500 an acre for burning in this area. That said, you know, landscape burning is still an issue socially and politically, and so it's not something we have seen happening in the county in the more recent past. But one of the great things with the collaboration that we've had with Colorado State Forestry and with open space is that the hand crew that we have that does that work on the steeper slopes that can't be done by contractors is also there to help fight fires. So when we have fires in the community, those folks are pulled off, and they actually can easily double the number of firefighters available on any given day compared with what the local fire departments can turn out. So that program, last year, you know, our guys, you know, we had about 30 fires in the 285 quarter last year. All of them were kept small, and largely that was because of that additional, you know, the additional manpower that we have from those personnel.
Maybe one additional comment. The last week, since we've last chatted, we've had some good news on the Flying J Ranch project. One of the big things that we can offer in open space is in our projects are demonstration sites for local community. The State Forest Service, Jefferson Conservation District, I think the fire districts would say the same thing, that to get private landowners to agree to do this work is one of the grand challenges here. And when we do these large projects, we incentivize others to do the same. And in the last week, we've had a large landowner to the west of Flying J see what we're doing, become so excited that they approached us and offered to do the same work on their property as a result of us doing this on ours. To us, that's the ultimate success story for doing these projects. This person is very informed about these projects, and we'll be working with them to try to find deficiencies with contractors and things like that. But that's a nice recent development that I want to share with you, because that really is the ultimate goal here, working together.
Because part of our challenge is you can thin a forest and mitigate as much as possible, but if you have private property nearby or surrounding it, that becomes a challenge. I mean, even in the Three Sisters Aldafer, Aldafer Three Sisters slide, you see that in terms of the density. Is that, if we go to that slide and look at the area that you've thinned in the middle, and then the areas surrounding it, what is the area, is that private property, is that just the open space?
So I'll stand up and just...
And how big is that property mitigated?
This piece of property, I think, was somewhere around 40 to 60 acres. I'd have to pull the specs. I think that's exactly within the range. This is the park boundary, so most of this, I believe, is still within the park, which means this is now teed up for additional projects. One of the constraints at open space is this is about as much as we can take on internally. This was actually a huge lift for our team to do this in two years. So we're limited just by resource, capacity, staff, funding, usual things to be able to do these types of chunks at a time. So this is probably mostly in the still-in-the-park system. This is probably private land here to the northeast. So more work to be done, and we always acknowledge that. Of course, this area also has to be maintained now, which adds to our existing ongoing workload. And what was the other question, Commissioner?
That, I just wanted to know how big of a space that was mitigated, and you answered that. Now, is that one of those, you know, barriers so it doesn't spread? Is that...
Certainly, treating this will reduce the risk of spread through the area. It was not treated intended to be a shaded fuel break. We would have removed more trees and done it in a different way, but certainly this reduces the risk of fire in this area.
Yeah.
I think a key to the conversation is keeping in perspective the wildland-urban interface. That's where development is getting close to those forest areas, and open space and Denver Mountain Parks have done some great work mitigating in between those wildland, in between those neighborhoods that are around those forests. And that's where a lot of that work needs to happen. There's a lot of forest land that is strictly forest land, it's deep forest. Some of the programs we're working on in Evergreen are those neighborhoods working with Denver Mountain Parks and other agencies on, you know, our neighborhood backs right up to this forest. Can we get some thinning done just beyond the neighborhood and the fuel break in that area to help them, or along the road so they can help with evacuations when something does take off? So we're, from a fire district standpoint, we're really concentrating on where does that wildland-urban interface and the forest meet, and how can we create a buffer?
I think your picture that showed Flying J Ranch really highlights what Chief DJ is talking about right there. If you look to the right of the mitigation, that's all neighborhood and up above. Those are all residents living outside of this.
Yep. And this fire break is there, part of this project was to engage all of those residents. Every single one was contacted with a mailer. There was a public meeting that the chief was encouraged enough to offer at the firehouse to add as a public meeting site, which we really appreciate. And we also had a social media campaign, a lot of messaging, and I'd say all but maybe one or two messages I received have been very supportive of this project. Initially, it took people back a bit to see the change to their park, but they all appreciate why we're doing this. So that's a win for us.
Well, why don't we shift gears a little bit? We've got about a half hour left to get into some of those specific areas that we were going to just touch upon. I know that the time is flying by, which we thought it would. Great presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for that, the Jefferson County Open Space. One of the, a couple of the areas, and you talked about this a little bit too, we talked about the LOE and also how do we create defensible spaces, and how do we think about development and homes and building and those kinds of factors? And one of the issues that we had talked about earlier this year, when Jeannie and I were with the chief, is chapter five of the LOE code. So we want to touch a little bit on that. That may require a more in-depth conversation, just in the time that we have left. And we also wanted to give a quick update on the Smokey Bear sign and where we are in terms of policy, because that U.S. Supreme Court ruling apparently threw a little bit of a nickel in that one. There's just sort of a common sense approach to making sure that we are raising awareness in our communities about these issues. And then, of course, the Conifer Moratorium that was proposed by the Elk Creek Fire District Board of Directors, and touching on that, that may be a future Board of County Commissioners briefing perhaps to go into a little bit more depth. Well, why don't we talk a little bit more about the LOE code and chapter five, and just where we're at with that? Do you want to talk at this a little bit first?
Basically, a number of our districts have adopted the LOE code. We've been okay with that, and another section that hasn't gone that direction has been the chapter five.
Say it a little louder.
Oh, sorry. Okay. We have, the, many of our fire districts in the mountains have already adopted the international wild, international wild-urban land interface code, LOE for short. And the piece that we have held back is the construction components, because they're actually how you build a wall. You would need, you'd need to come and dust and get a permit and put a fire-resistant siding on, and some other things like that. But they're really construction components which come out of the building code and the residential code. Other than that, there's really not, we've not objected at all to the LOE code going forward. It's just, it gives you access and water supply and a bunch of other authorities that are really useful in the mountains for the fire districts. So I think that we'll be moving those forward. Hopefully, we'll be updating fire codes this summer, the next month or two, getting a briefing scheduled and move those forward. And then we'll be really looking at what do we want to do with the building code provisions, and if we do something with those, then it would be, I talked to somebody recently, and my dream would be to have those go into effect January 1 of 2020. No guarantee. But we need to look at a lot of those components right now. The county is in with an awful lot, if you take a look at this statewide survey of other counties that are out there, and the two most common are one, defensible space that the county's actually requiring, and the other one is the Class A roof covering. And Jefferson County already has those. There are other requirements that the LOE requires, the LOE code requires, that are already in our codes. So I just think we'll work through those and see where we land on them. So that's it to come, and I think it'll be done us and the fire marshals taking a look at those things. So that works.
So more conversations on chapter five to come?
More conversations to come.
It sounds like, if possible, depending on what we would all talk about regarding staff and the Board of County Commissioners, that there may be more conversations on specific aspects of chapter five that we may want to look at adopting depending on what that could look like, what that might be, or in collaboration with the chief that we're talking about.
Correct. But fire codes are, hopefully, will get those moving here pretty anywhere. So any thoughts?
I was wondering if I'd be able to plan to see, because there's kind of two components. There's a regulatory component, which I think probably encompasses a small fraction of what we're talking about, then I think there's a much larger economic component, just how we pay for this, how we incentivize landowners to get this done. And I'm wondering how we might partner with some of our local banks to offer low-interest loans specifically for fire mitigation work. And perhaps there's a role for the county to play to help potentially buy down some of the interest rate so that a low-interest rate can be offered to private landowners to go out and do some of this forest mitigation work. Maybe as a way to group purchase some of these loans where you can get 50 or 60 million owners together to say, "Hey, yeah, we will commit to doing this interest rate, and we're going to commit to doing forest mitigation work on our land."
Is that happening in other parts of the country, or are there, are there in other counties?
Not that I'm aware of. That's what came to me while I was sitting here with some...
Reacting to conversations, sorry.
I hope in this meeting actually prompts additional meetings. I'd like to see one just on the LOE code alone, where we can get together, because I'd hate to see anything get passed without something being in there now before. And I want to wait another two years, because there's a lot of development going on, and as people go off a little as too, it's got us on edge, because all that's going to go in with the existing codes and not help us protect the areas.
In chapter five, it affects only the building of new homes, correct?
Well, it would impact, impact new construction and at any time open, renovate.
Yeah, one of the biggest issues that would happen with existing homes would be replacement of decks, you know, you would really, and that's one of the biggest vulnerabilities that we see with homes, is that wooden decks are often, very often, the place where the fire catches. And replacing those with more, with a safer deck when they're replaced at an existing home would certainly reduce that risk. You know, part of what we, you know, from our standpoint on this, we recognize that, you know, homes, we don't have this dumb manpower to both fight a fire and protect homes. You know, when we get into these fires burning up there, the homes are going to either survive or not survive based on how they're built. And that's just the reality of having not enough manpower to fight those. So that's a, that's a big part of why we see that as a high priority moving ahead, is that any more buildings that come into our communities should be built, you know, with the best chance of surviving on their own possible.
There's an unfortunate reality of we can't put fire truck in every home. So we go in, we look at it, we do what we can do in 20 minutes, and we move on. Or we look at it and put a red flag on their mailbox saying, "Sorry, this one's just going to burn." And when people get home, they see that red flag. They want to know why that was on. Sometimes they sneak in at night and they take the red flag off. So, but that's an unfortunate reality, is people go off and sit. We don't have enough people for every home, so we have to pick the ones that we can save, and we have to let the other ones go.
I think it's important to understand that everything, the bulk of hope we're talking about in here today is just proactive. So mitigation is proactive, and it's helpful for the board. The code is proactive because it allows us to, at the lowest cost possible, begin that defensive nature, okay? It talks about, the code helps us as a community to establish and determine risk. It helps us model for the fire. It helps us provide access and water to sites. It helps us with mitigation efforts and the defensible spaces. And really, the critical component is hardening the house, because we can do all the mitigation, we can have all these projects that we want, but if we don't harden structures, even buildings that are separated by great distance, and Colorado Springs and Waldo, and fire are an appropriate example, ember wash from the fire are going to come down on those buildings and initiate fires if we're not removing the combustible materials from around the houses, if we're not doing the mitigation and defensible space, if we're not doing the landscaping. But importantly, if we're not putting siding and roofs and understructure protection on these houses, then we've wasted our time, because the ember wash is going to come down, it's going to catch that structure, and it's going to burn. So the whole idea here is to be proactive and not reactive, because when the trucks are rolling out the door, it's too late.
Well, and we've seen some communities like Waldo Canyon, didn't Colorado Springs look at chapter five or something else besides chapter five, the LOE or the...
They adopted, following that, they adopted a number of changes, including, you know, changing decking requirements and changing some of the base of the wall, a few other key elements from that. And they did, and they were very successful in putting that in. One of the other pieces that's really worth looking at from them is that they also provide a manual to people who are going to be building on both what's required and what's recommended to, you know, make that home safer. You know, I've talked with a lot of architects, builders, and homeowners, and most of them don't know, you know, what difference it makes whether or not, you know, you put Arty plank siding versus cedar siding. So a lot of that comes down to education, because I think, you know, educated homebuyers also are going to want homes that have survivable characteristics.
So as we mentioned, there's still a lot of development taking place, and there's a lot of small 1920s and 30s homes that are getting scraped, and they're being replaced by five, six, seven, eight thousand square foot homes. And that's still taking place all around in the field. So we want to get ahead of this and try and have some...
Be proactive.
Does that cost of construction, what would be the objection?
In terms of the five, in terms of chapter five, sure?
It's just appearance. You could live in, it's a little bit of mountains.
Yeah, but if they don't have a house, they ain't going to make that.
Smack it out of my yard.
And the cost difference between, for new construction is actually not that great. IDHS has done some really good work on evaluating that, and come, you know, come up with different components and the cost effectiveness. So in a new, in new construction, there's very little additional cost. Retrofitting, obviously, there's more cost. But, you know, I think the other issue, obviously, I think that the counter applies, is the staff time to look at every plan and ensure that, you know, the materials being specified and being built with are correct.
Becky, do you see a need for increased capacity if we were to look at chapter five, or even if we... or even if we were to look at certain aspects of it that we thought were high value, that if we weren't able to adopt the whole chapter?
There will be a learning curve, both, somewhat both on our side and also on our customer's Time will tell. We, and thus some of the discussion that will go on, on what that will take. The challenging one will be retrofitting decks. When somebody goes to rebuild their deck or install a new deck on a home that they've got, that, that will be a significant one. There's a couple other parts and pieces that will take more from us. So stay tuned.
So more work ahead on that. I'm going to jump, can you just a second? I'm just going to turn to Chris real quick, because I know you've been...
The chiefs and marshal, you were going in the direction also better than actually where the question was. It's kind of fleshing out that connection between the forest fire and the structure fire. And I know chief will often, you and I got a chance to talk about this a little bit, a lot of fires out west were, you know, they became structural fires. And I, and just kind of the important elements of, you know, what's different when you're fighting, fighting those two different kinds of fires? How can you, can we talk about that connection? When does, when does the fire change characteristics, and, you know, hopefully that helps us get to supporting what the WUI Code prescribed, or other land use types of decisions that we might make in the future? I don't know, you were probably getting there, talking about the deck materials and hardening structures, because I just wanted to see if there's anything else about those. You know, the, and the codes do talk about separation of buildings from each other, and when buildings, and you know, obviously, California's codes are even more stringent than the WUI Code in that, you know, every, if you build homes that are, you know, 20 feet apart, many of these fires, once one house catches, it becomes a cascade, and it becomes what we call an urban conflagration, where it isn't a forest anymore, it's house catching, house catching house. And I mean, in those cases, you want more, you know, you want siding that's even a step up in terms of fire resistant on those that are close together. So there, and there's a lot to that, obviously, that would be in that, that future conversation as well.
Especially in those wind events that happens.
So some of our developments are pretty old, and the roads are subsstandard. So we're turning up building materials, but what do we do about just egress and egress?
We need to address that issue in the future as well. I know a number of the communities up in our area have asked about, you know, whether or not, you know, they can, you know, get a second road in and out. You know, any new, new developments above a certain size have to have two ways in and out. But for example, Conifer Mountain, where I live, has two entrances on one side, and then all the rest of it has no entry, no exit. So if the fire burns on that side of the neighborhood, there's no way out, and there's no safe place to be. There are no open areas in that community. So those are, those are things that we have to address, not only in new construction, but how do we improve the life safety, you know? Heck with the houses, how do we keep the people alive in those communities?
And that's really one of our biggest risks when these events happen, is the egress and the getting everybody out of evacuation.
And I even know, you see, we need to address those. I even know how to begin. How do we begin to address those?
Well, I think this, this conversation, its importance is allowing us really good opportunities. We've heard two words today over and over, collaboration and education. I think what, kind of echoing what Chief Ouija said, what I'd really like to see in that step is setting that meeting to talk about WUI Codes, because that's something we can do proactively right now, at least that portion. The other things are conversations that we need to continue, and we should have as we move forward, but one thing we can do is work with the county and begin that, that step of adopting the code. We have, we have great opportunities from the fire service just to help out, where we can educate, we have good contacts with the community. You can see that at this meeting here. We have very vested interests from our community members, and we can tap into that working with the community. These other conversations are just as important of the evacuation. And we have several roads one way in, one way out, and you get one car sideways, and we're down there. But what we can do right now is set this meeting and start having this conversation about, you know, to get it adopted as quickly as we can.
Well, I think that, I think that makes a lot of sense, but I think I too really struggle with, there's so many priorities on the table in terms of what's important, from, you know, hardening of homes, the WUI Code, egress, egress, community awareness and education, collaboration, mitigation, for all those kinds of pieces. I think one thing that could be helpful as well as part of the collaborative effort is where do we start? How do we prioritize that together, you know, and figure out how we best map that out? How do we look at funding opportunities? You know, I thought some of the ideas that you had raised about thoroughized communities and what you're looking at in terms of grants was interesting, but sort of mapping that out in inventory, I think could be really helpful. And then how do we prioritize that moving forward? So we're, we're talking to each other.
Commissioner, I'd like to point out one more thing, just briefly about the WUI Code. There's a, I think most people, when they think about the WUI Code, the wildfire, the urban interface is, how does wildfire impact structures? We also have to remember that the code exists and is written to reverse out from that, that if a structure fire occurs, that if the efforts are required in the WUI Code, we don't get the wildfire because a structure is caught, that the fire initiated or originated within the structure, was propagated outward. So that's a two-way street, and again, that's why the implementation and enforcement of the WUI Code is your, is your least expensive and most effective route to begin this process.
Well, and I was just going to ask real quick too, just really, our other commissioners, in terms of the moratorium question, I wonder if that's something we should talk about in a briefing in the future, because I don't think we're going to be able to give it the depth and attention. But it raises a larger question about development, and so of course, these issues about water sustainability, wildfire mitigation came up in a recent case involving the Conifer Heights proposal, and this issue actually came up when we were hearing that case. But I think there are all kinds of implications potentially for how we think about different communities and how they develop. So is that something we might want to do for a briefing in the future? Okay. So we don't just, so we don't lose that and come back to it. And then last but not least, we just wanted to close the loop, since we had you here on the Smokey Bear signs and some of the issues there. I'm going to turn it over to Courtney, because I think, thanks to Courtney and Steve, during as well, we may have found a way to kind of approach that issue through policy.
Yeah, we were, we have a draft that I think we sent it to one of your...
I got it.
Yeah, okay. That would add fire prevention signs as an option for fire districts, limit those to just fire districts. We're also proposing just to limit on certain types of roads, not like getting into neighborhoods, but keeping on larger streets where it's probably having the most impact. And then we do have some concern if the signs get too close to the right way, we want them to be safe for the travel in public if anybody was in a car accident. But hopefully, that could be a happy medium where we can get awareness out.
Just a quick, what happened with the Smokey Bear, constitutional problem?
So, so there's a system court case, the Tommy Gilbert case, and basically, your sign code now has to be content neutral. You can't actually say what the content of the sign is. And so we've tried to neutralize our sign code, but we also have to have a compelling government interest if we are going to have it, have content be part of what we're regulating. So here, I think the argument would be we have a compelling government interest to some fire, to get everybody, and we're going to agree with that. So we think that we can make the argument that this type of sign would pass constitutional muster and be permitted.
Evergreen's standpoint, thank you for working on that and coming up with some. That's exactly what we were trying to accomplish, major thoroughfare is for people to join in and out. So thanks for taking that on.
So we'll go down that, check that one out. See, we're making progress?
Well, maybe. Which one of you wears the Smokey Bear?
So we have, so we've got plenty more to work on, I think, down the road. I think it was clear that the WUI Code and Chapter Five, hardening of homes, how we think about that, what that looks like moving forward is probably a key conversation as well, but so many other issues as well. We talked, we touched on slash, you know, the impact of that as part of fire mitigation, the forestry efforts as well, that you had shared with us not too long ago, the recent Board of County Commissioner meeting too. So I think what we can do is take this back to the Board of County Commissioners, maybe unpack some of these issues in close collaboration with everyone around the table, and then see how we impact on moving forward. I, just a huge, on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners, a huge thank you to all of you, all of you who are with us in the audience and around the table for your work, for your presentations, and also helping us understand how all these different components fit together, what's working really well, where we have some gaps, and how we might move forward here. We appreciate it very much. Thanks so much for your time and your expertise, and more conversations to come. Appreciate it.
Thank you.